This evening, thank all of you for being here. All this ready to hold our public hearings.
Yes, sir. Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 14th, 2025 at 6:30 PM regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 7.5, Article 4 of Charleston County Code of Ordinances, the Charleston County Greenbelt Bank Ordinance.
Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do not.
All right.
Next is, notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 14th, 2025 at 6:30 PM regarding an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 2305 to include the Hamlin Beach Community Historic District as a historic district subject to the temporary major subdivision moratorium imposed by Charleston County Council.
Do we have anyone signed up?
We do. We have five people signed up. The first person is Myra Snite Richardson, followed by Anna Kippleblatt.
All right. Please, when you come up, please give your name and your address.
Good day. My name is Myra Snite Richardson. My address is 2755 Earl Johnson Lane. I'm the president of the Hamlin Beach Community. We are truly happy to be at this point. This is a momentous occasion for us. We are looking forward to protecting and honoring our heritage and preserving and protecting our legacy. This gives us an opportunity to know what's coming in our community, be able to have our voice heard. So, we would love to continue to be a part of historic district, the full historic district, and also have the moratorium that gives us the opportunity to see what's coming in our community and have a voice at the table. Thank you again for your help. I appreciate the Hamlin Beach Community for all the hard work they've done. I appreciate Charleston County for the work that they and dedication to their job in helping us get to this point. I appreciate the Ten Mile Community and the Phillips Community for all of their advice. We need this to protect this community. Like I said before, we survived Hurricane Hugo, a natural disaster. We need to survive the man-made disaster which is overdevelopment. Thank you again.
Anna Kippleblatt, Sam Spence, Cassandra Davis.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Anna Kippleblatt and I serve as the Communities and Transportation Program Director of the Coastal Conservation League located at 131 Spring Street. The Conservation League is in full support of the inclusion of the Hamlin Beach Community into the subdivision moratorium for the unincorporated Charleston County Historic Settlement Communities. The subdivision moratorium was implemented last year for the purpose of adding temporary protections to historically designated settlement communities as a result of increased development threatening to compromise the history, culture, and character of the communities. Like other settlement communities in Charleston County, Hamlin Beach is facing heightened growth pressures. Inclusion in the moratorium will offer additional temporary protection on top of the historic designation while more permanent safeguards can be put in place. The League does not always support building moratoriums as they can have adverse effects, often increasing housing costs and pushing demand to areas outside of the moratorium boundaries. However, in this case, a subdivision moratorium is necessary. Ten Mile finds itself surrounded by building moratoriums in both Mount Pleasant and Ondah. Phillips, Hamlin, and Beefield also face increased encroaching growth pressures as well as the many other settlement communities who have not yet been designated as historical by the county. As we stated in our support for the moratorium last year, forming a committee or task force to think creatively on other ways to protect the cultural and historic significance of these communities and provide meaningful resources would be a useful way to add in other safeguards during the duration of the subdivision moratorium. The Conservation League offers its full support in any way we can be helpful in the next steps forward. We believe this subdivision moratorium will alleviate pressure in Hamlin while giving time to ensure communities like these are protected in other ways so that they may thrive and flourish for generations to come. Thank you, council, for listening to the voices of these communities and recognizing the need for additional protections over these valuable cultural landscapes that continue to tell the history of our Low Country.
Sam Spence, Cassandra Davis, Hattie Ory.
Hello, council. Sam Spence, 147 King Street from the Preservation Society. Just wanted to thank you all so far for your support for the Hamlin Beach Community and their request to be designated as a historic district. Just as a reminder, as Anna just said, this moratorium is time limited. It's a two-year moratorium. It's designed to find permanent solutions that can protect the character and the cultural landscapes of this community. And the development pressures that are present in Hamlin are similar or even maybe stronger than Ten Mile experiences. And so, I encourage you to support this inclusion in the moratorium. And thank you again for your support on the designation of Hamlin Beach. Thanks.
Cassandra Davis, Hattie Ory.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cassandra Davis. 1148 Hugher Road, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, 29466. I am the Secretary of the Hamlin Beach Community Association and I am requesting that our moratorium requests be approved. It would definitely help our community by stopping some of the developers that are actually in the process of trying to purchase some properties right now. That particular property is going to bring in about nine homes and they're going to be about one point, a million and some change. And that's according to the developer. And that would definitely drive our taxes up and cause a problem for our community and the surrounding members. There are a lot of things that we need to put in place to help us navigate the system. So, I support the moratorium being approved and I hope that you all will do it for us. Thanks.
Hattie Ory.
Good evening. Good evening. Hattie Ory. I live at 1255 Lake Mallard Boulevard in Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. And I'm just up here to support Hamlin and the endeavors for coming under the historic district because Snouton is working on theirs and we just want to give all the support we can.
That's it for that public hearing. And finally, notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and the Boeing Company. And nobody signed up for that one.
All right, very well. Thank you so very much. And thank you to those who came and participated publicly in our public hearing. We will have public comments at this time. Anyone signed up?
Yes, we have 13 people signed up. The first person is Kim Clark, followed by Katie Zimmerman and Gia Ellis.
My name is Kim Clark.
Can you state your address?
7755 Pepper Corn Lane, North Charleston, South Carolina. I appreciate the sentiments shared in the press conference earlier to demonstrate the high value you place on public input. My concern today is that large-scale financial decisions are made through speculation of economic development. For example, county council approved several incentives for Elbit Systems, including a fee in lieu of taxation, a $700,000 set-aside grant, and special source revenue credit. On top of all this, the types of weapons Elbit Systems creates and their current use is alarming. Elbit Systems manufactures gun systems, drones, combat vehicles, and more to be used by the Israel military. Much-needed funding has been removed from our community to fund and supply genocide in Gaza. Right in my backyard, using my tax dollars, I've been implicated in war. I don't want to aid and abet genocide. There's evidence in and out of SC that these incentives don't actually benefit the surrounding communities. So, many of our community members struggle without support like incentives through producing tangible results for the benefit of our residents. As Charleston continues growing rapidly, are we really thinking about our future with this decision? If a high school student said they wanted to make weapons of mass destruction for a genocide regardless of location, the school system would be alerted by the security risk and put wraparound services in place for the student and family in their time of need. Several companies want to bring businesses here. Why are we taking money from just anybody, no matter the cost or consequences, to the people of Charleston and beyond? Thank you.
Katie Zimmerman, Gia Ellis, Martin Levinson.
Hi, I'm Katie Zimmerman, Executive Director of Charleston Moves, 478 King Street downtown. And I just wanted to thank you all for voting in favor of awarding the contract at Finance Committee for the Woodland Shores and Maybank Project, Complete Streets Project. And I listened to y'all's discussion and I just wanted to, this project is at least six years in the making, so I just wanted to kind of bring up some bullet points that might have been forgotten. And one of those is there were two walking audits conducted in this area following five or six incidents of serious injury or fatalities in the area on Maybank between the poorhouse and the public house. And those audits included multiple agencies, multiple jurisdictions, and neighborhood leadership. Following that, Charleston Moves did some bike ped counts on site, and we actually had motorists pull over to talk to us as well when they saw us out there. One of the most staggering pieces of data that we got out of those audits was during the farmer's market, we counted more than 600 people crossing mid-block within less than three hours. So, it's an intensely pedestrian-used space. It just doesn't fit the need. And so, what you all voted on is going to help ensure that we're protecting human beings as they are using the space the way that they see fit. The other thing that was very noticeable when we were out there is the diversity of the folks who are out there walking and bicycling. It was every age, every ability, multiple modes of transportation. So, babies, people with dogs, people in wheelchairs, anybody you can imagine was out there crossing mid-block. So, I cannot stress enough the importance of getting this project done. I appreciate all the work that you all and staff have put into it and just thank you for voting.
Gia Ellis, Martin Levinson, Safina Sidiqua.
Good evening. My name is Gia Ellis. I live at 132 Fishburne Street. I'm here tonight as a preschool and kindergarten teacher, a Christian, a taxpayer, and a member of the Elbit Out of South Carolina Coalition. I am joined tonight by many of my neighbors who span the county in protest against not only the tax incentives that Elbit Systems receives, but also in protest of its mere presence. If you are here in support of the Elbit Out of SC Coalition, please stand up. Thank you. You can sit. On the rare occasion that I am not working through my lunch break responding to parent emails, I sometimes scan news headlines only to see more atrocities being committed against Palestinians with weapons made by Elbit. And when I return from my lunch break to a room of sleeping children, children who are Black, white, Jewish, Palestinian-American, Mexican-American, Filipino, and more, I ask myself why some children seem to matter more than other children. As a teacher and mandated reporter, I feel an immense responsibility to look out for children beyond my care. To quote James Baldwin, "The children are always ours." This includes the children of Gaza and that includes the children of Charleston. As such, I cannot stay silent while my taxes are being used to aid and abet the genocide in Palestine and one that is uniquely targeting children. Just 1.2 miles away from Elbit is Joseph Pi Elementary School. I wonder if the teachers who work there also buy supplies out of their own paychecks and struggle to pay for rent and healthcare like me. And I wonder if the students of Joseph Pi Elementary know that the money that could be used to help them learn and grow is instead being used to build and export weapons to slaughter children like them all across the world. We need to end the relationship between Charleston County and Elbit Systems. We will be in touch. Thank you.
Martin Levinson, Safina Sidiqua, Autumn Waddell.
Good evening, council. My name is Martin Levinson. I live at 1771 Opel Avenue. That's in West Ashley. Been there for coming on 45 years now. I chased a folly beach girl here to the Low Country and I fell in love with it. I've been in love with Low Country ever since. There's what's not to love? All the hunting, the fishing, the beaches, the open green space, the opportunity, the schools. It's a great place to raise kids. Unfortunately, within our midst, we have a corporation that's diametrically opposed to the concept of raising healthy children. Elbit Systems makes a very handy profit off of killing children. There are numerous people that are dressed in red here tonight just to show solidarity for each other. I would like nothing more as a citizen of this community than for each of you to speak with them one-on-one, person to person, and see what we can do to get this plague, this poison, out of our community as soon as possible. Elbit must go. Thank you for your time.
Safina Sidiqua, Autumn Waddell, Emma Abrams.
Hi, I'm Safana Sidiki, 103 Sotilly Street, 29403. I'm a physician. I take care of the people of Charleston. 10 years ago, I took an oath to do no harm and that's a principle, a guiding principle that I take through every aspect of my life, not just professionally. So, of course, I am obligated to speak out against the genocide of Palestinian people that my tax dollars are funding, especially when it's coming from right here in my neighborhood in my county from Elbit Systems Weapons Manufacturing Plant in Ladson. This facility is one of 11 Elbit Systems Weapons Manufacturing Plants in the United States, meaning Charleston County is top 11 in the United States at aiding and abetting in genocide. Is this our legacy? To me, this is unacceptable. This county council made a dire mistake when they approved the FLO agreement. And, you know, you have the power to do something about it. I don't know if you can ever undo the harm that's already been done, but we can at least stop perpetuating it. So, end the tax breaks for Elbit. We want Elbit shut down. We don't want tax breaks for any genocide there. We want Elbit out of South Carolina and we want a free Palestine.
Autumn Waddell, Emma Abrams, Elizabeth Osborne.
Good evening. My name is Autumn Waddell. I live at 509 Rainsong Drive. I'm a Charleston County resident and I don't understand why my county council has a contract with Elbit Systems that gives them massive tax incentives and hands over hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars. Elbit Systems is a company with a net worth of $11.17 billion, whose executives are all millionaires. I don't understand why they need that money more than our public schools or our infrastructure. I don't understand why Elbit Systems, whose largest client is a foreign military and who has been directly implicated in war crimes spanning decades, should be allowed to do business in my backyard with the full cooperation of my county council. Elbit Systems has a history of violating international and US law by selling weapons to governments such as the South African apartheid government in the 70s, Rwanda during the genocide in the 90s, and Myanmar until 2022. These violations are not just a thing of the past. Elbit Systems currently provides at least 85% of the weapons being used in Gaza, which leading global humanitarian organizations and our highest courts of law have labeled as genocide. The contract the county has with Elbit seemingly allows them to operate here with impunity despite their unlawful and violent track record. Elbit's presence makes me feel unsafe in my own town. I would rather see the money tied up in their contract going back into my community. And I urge my county council to end their contract with Elbit so our money and resources can be going to things like our parks, schools, or roads. Our taxes and the companies that do business here should be uplifting, strengthening, and improving Charleston County, not diminishing it. Thank you.
Emma Abrams, Elizabeth Osborne, Caroline Denham.
Hello, my name is Emma Abrams and I live at 980 Mooreing Drive on James Island. And I am a lifelong Charlestonian and a proud product of Charleston's public schools. I am here to ask the county council to end tax benefits and grants for the weapons manufacturer Elbit Systems as well as Boeing. These tax incentives come at the expense of our public schools and our infrastructure and other valuable investments in our community. Trading books and teacher pay and infrastructure upgrades for a company that manufactures bombs that kill children doesn't seem like a fair trade to me. When I was in high school, my high school teachers had to request donations so that they could buy books for our class or furniture for our classrooms. All this while Elbit Systems receives tax incentives from this county to build the weapons that are killing innocent people all around the world. This is money that should have been buying my books and furniture for our classrooms. Fund our schools, not bombs.
Elizabeth Osborne, Caroline Denham, Philip Lowery.
Good evening. My name is Philip Lowery, 1528 Ross Vought Way, Charleston, South Carolina, 29414. Elbit Systems is a horrendous company that builds horrendous weapons that massacre people every single day. This county has decided that they want their hand in that pot. There have been various scandals with Elbit. There have been various divestments from Elbit, Denmark, Norway, even HSBC, which has been caught laundering money for terrorist organizations, divested from Elbit Systems. Members of this board felt it was their duty to continue to do business with people that deliberately murder, maim, and destroy lives. This is not a political decision. This is a very emotional decision. I get that. The expectation from you all is that we find a way to divest from Elbit Systems. We revoke the FLO agreement. We demand a ceasefire immediately and we demand Charleston County compliance. Thank you.
Elizabeth Osborne, Caroline Denham, Matt Colburn.
Do I say my address?
What's your name?
Oh, Caroline Denham.
Yes, and your address?
2225 Green Ridge Road. Do I say the unit number?
No.
No, just double check. All right. Do I just go?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah. All right. Hi there. My name is Caroline Denham. This is my first city council meeting, so I might be a bit out of my depth here, but I'd like to bring a slightly different perspective. My mother, she loves historical Charleston, old houses and architecture and all that kind of thing runs through me, not important. Point is, I hear you like Elbit because you envision a future where they create a great deal of jobs, a great deal of wealth. If you're looking for wealth north abroad, there's a place lined with lapis lazúl, gilded with gold, and furnished with the finest hardwoods. It is a mansion of the finest craft wrapped by the most skilled hands money could buy. And the man who owned it, Nathaniel Russell, was a slave owner. It's a dismal, ugly legacy. That's my point. Money does not buy legacy. By supporting Elbit, you're drenching your legacy in blood. I have nothing else to say.
Matt Colburn, Myra Richardson, John Grigsby.
Matt Colburn, 3821 West Montague Avenue, North Charleston. First off, in the interest of talking about transparency, it is very inaccessible for people to sign up to speak. People work all over the county. I'm not sure if you have another way to do it besides coming here and signing up an hour beforehand, but it's just not accessible. And you either don't want people to speak or don't really value their voices. Something's got to be done about that. But on to Elbit, we really can't stress enough the point of y'all engaging with us and not just waiting for these public comment sessions to end, nodding your head, looking bored, whatever. Because, I mean, we need an explanation, really, on why, like, millions of dollars have been diverted from our communities to give tax breaks to Elbit facilities, a facility currently engaging genocide. When we look around, our working-class citizens live in paycheck to paycheck. I mean, North Charleston in 2023 was the eviction capital of the nation. Come on. That's a shame. So, really, I mean, you have nothing for the working-class people. The price of living keeps going up and, you know, got to wonder, like, they talked about legacy here. I mean, you want your legacy involved with Elbit. You already got a lawsuit over the 14 people that have died right across the street here in Alcannon. One of them, the corner ruler, is neglecting your homicide, right? And around the same time you're making these deals with Elbit, you have people dying over there. So, there's something about that. So, despite all this, we're engaged in good faith. We are doing our due diligence as citizens. Like, you have a duty and an obligation to meet with us on it and we will be following up with you, as I said. But, I mean, it's not an ideological debate either. This is talking about standing on the side of US, international, and humanitarian law. This is a genocide. This is a genocide, right? And we're done with it. We don't want Elbit Systems in our community. Elbit Systems of America produces weapons of genocide in 9028 Palmetto Commerce Parkway, Ladson, South Carolina, right away from here. So, again, engage with us. Don't just shake your head and wait for us to done because we're not going to stop. And I would like for you to have this flyer here if somebody can, since this is your first time here, if somebody handed over.
Myra Richardson, John Grigsby.
Myra Richardson, 2755 Earl Johnson Lane. As a member of the Community Alliance, we're a group that's focused on taking care and informing other members of our community and all communities of what's coming up in our area. As a part of the Hamlin Beach Community, we need protection for infrastructure. When there's things going on, we do not want to be the scapegoat or we do not want our properties used for profitable gain. The residents of Earl Johnson Lane have been fighting to get water and sewer, proper water and sewer, but we do not want that line to continue on to Hamlin Road. If there's an issue, if there's sewer water that's needed on Hamlin Road, we would like that water to run down Hamlin Road. Our properties have been under threat of eminent domain. Things have been put on plaques without our knowledge to run that sewer line there. Looking in the Snouton community, as they're doing the work in the Snouton community, it's sloppy. It's no effort to protect seem like that community. Charleston County needs to visit the site where they're doing this work to make them treat our community with respect and dignity. In the Four Mile community, at 1755 Highway 17 North, intersection of Highway 17 and Indigo Drive, there was a quiet mattress shop until we saw the green vape truck. They're turning the mattress shop into a vaping store right across the street from Olive Branch AME Church. When I called and asked questions about it, they said, guess what? It's already been approved for light commercial, so there's no public hearing. They're just moving in. They were illegally building a wall to separate the two shops. A vape shop and a mattress shop was going to be in the same location. We asked questions. Protect our communities, please.
John Grigsby.
Thank you. Can you hear me? John Grigsby, 4501 Mixon Avenue, North Charleston. Dear Charleston County Council, thank you very much for your time. As a Christian who opposes apartheid and genocide, I'd like to discuss your subsidy and tax preferences for Elbit Systems. I only found out about this subsidy a few weeks ago. I'm going to cut to the chase. Please take note of what I'm about to say to you because I'll only say it once. When Matt Lieber turned the 116th House District red for the first time since Reconstruction, in a district that supported Biden by 7%, data and technology in a district that supported Biden by 7%, data and technology was critical to his success. I was his data guy. I was the only person besides his wife whose name was mentioned in his victory speech. And now, as offended as I am that you're subsidizing this hideous corporation, I'm offering my skills to the noble folks here, I've been, I guess, I don't know how long, trying to get you to do the right thing. Your aces, I've noticed, have been won by small margins, and my humble is you'd better reverse course fast. Albert out of SC. Thank you.
That's the last speaker.
Much, and thank you to all who came and voiced your concerns and certainly shared, you know, the issues that you brought before us. We appreciate that. As a part of, as we begin our county council meeting this year, we were used to county council persons doing the prayer and the pledge. At this point, we are going to shift, and our good friends from the Coastal Crisis Chaplaincy will do the prayer this year, and we, if we have special call meetings, we'll shift at those times. And then, based on the incredible talent that we have within Charleston County government, we have an emerging leaders program. So those who are currently in the emerging leaders and/or those who may be alumni of the emerging leaders will do the pledge. And so at this time, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Chaplain Rich Robinson of the Coastal Crisis Chaplaincy, who will do our prayer tonight, and Ms. Asia Heath, one of our budget analysts, who is participating in the emerging leaders program. She will do our pledge.
I invite you to join me in prayer. Almighty God of our beloved community, we thank you from the places from which we come to travel here tonight, and the places we'll return to serve, and the places that we make decisions for. We thank you for the beauty of diversity, diversity of mind and thought, of purpose, of faith, of background, of history. And Lord, we ask that all that diversity may work together to serve our community for good. God, we thank you for our first responders and our county employees and all those who serve and make this community what it is. We thank you also for our county council members tonight. We ask for your blessing to be upon them. Lord, as they bear the weight of this community on their shoulders, may you give them strength. May they rise up with your wisdom and with the heart of this community that they so demonstrate each day. So we ask for guidance and wisdom and your blessing upon this time as we seek your purpose. And it's in your holy and precious name, the name of peace, of shalom and salam, that we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all very much, Chaplain Robinson and Ms. Heath. At this time, we are ready to begin our county council meeting, the Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Item two.
Approved.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Thank you so much, the ayes have it. Item three, A.
Approved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Mr. Sasse, if you would join me down front.
From time to time, we have the auspicious pleasure of recognizing the perks of leadership and service, and tonight is one of those occasions. Presented to Herbert R. Sasse III in appreciation of your time, effort, and dedicated service as Chairman of Charleston County Council 2023-2024, congratulations and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you all. I couldn't have done it without everybody up here and everybody out there. And it's been something that's been a lot of fun. I've met a lot of friends and a lot of municipal officials and a lot of citizens. It's been enjoyable, and I'm gonna keep going on for a while. I sure appreciate this honor. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I look forward to working with you and council in the coming years. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. Give him another hand. Item four, our third reading of ordinances.
Chairman, can I pull number four A for discussion, or how does that?
We can have a discussion as we, when she reads the ordinance and she does the roll call vote, we might be able to.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and the Boeing Company, including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement with the Boeing Company, providing for payment by the Boeing Company of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for certain special source revenue or infrastructure credits, providing for the allocation of fee in lieu of taxes paid by the Boeing Company under the agreement for the establishment of multi-county industrial business park and other matters relating thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Before we vote on it, can we have a brief discussion and for me have a chance to?
Sorry.
Certainly.
Have an opportunity again, and this is the last public occasion, and I realize the outcome may be certain, but I think part of what transparency and openness and the public, and I asked some of these questions before, if a member of the staff can answer it, and I feel before we have a final vote and the public, these are taped and can hear, the public may decide this is a good idea, but they have a right to know all the details. So I'd like to know again, did Boeing, we're all proud and honored to have Boeing here, but this is not a time like when the shipyard closed, and I would ask, did Boeing approach us and say they would leave, or is there a sense that Boeing would leave unless we offer these financial incentives? Is there any sense that they would not hire more people unless we offered these financial incentives? And again, since this is a public hearing, in the interest of transparency, how much tax benefits are we giving them, for how long, and how much money would the county be giving up in the short term? If there's a way to answer those in public, I feel those are things that should be part of the debate, and I respect that others on this council may differ with me in why and where to do this, but I feel those are things in the interest of transparency, since it involves public money, that the public has a right to know. So I would ask the appropriate staff member to answer that, if it could be.
Ms. Richardson can answer this?
All right, thank you.
I want to make sure I heard your question. You want to review the exact agreement.
Well, my specific questions is, that questions are, rather, is it the sense of the staff that Boeing would leave if we didn't give these tax incentives, or that Boeing would not hire more people unless we give these tax incentives? And how much, in a way that can be articulated so the public can understand exactly what we're doing, how much we're giving away in the short term, in your explanation, in the long term, the benefits? I just feel that that all should be aired, and I realize it's a staff recommendation to do it, and you feel you have good reasons, but I'd like it to be public and have those questions answered, and I thank you very much.
There are also persons from Boeing here, is my understanding. If they wish to take this podium, they can.
Thank you, that would be fine as well.
Mr. Vice Chair, all of our projects that we bring in front of you are on a but-for case. So the company has expressed that but-for these incentives, they would be unable to put in the additional capital investment and hire the jobs. We take that very seriously when we have our conversations with our companies, and Boeing is no different. We have been talking to them for a long time. They have the ability to expand in other locations, but they are committed to our community because of the relationship that we have with them. The enhanced fee-in-lie tax agreement, along with the SSRC, that is part of this agreement. Let me see if I can find the exact numbers for you, sir. We will be bringing in an extra $60 million to other taxing entities and $9 million to the county as part of this agreement. And he, sorry, there's a lot of paperwork here. If you shall know, I took over Steve's file, and you know how thick they were. And then, during this 30-year term, we are expecting a six-to-one cost-benefit ratio, so for every dollar we invest into the company, we will get almost six back.
What is the, they have misunderstood the answer. What is the financial incentive that we're giving them if we're getting a $60 million benefit that you said? As I understood your answer, what is the incentive we're giving?
So they are under enhanced fee, which means that they're taxed at the 4%, so there, that is different than the 6% for standard fee-in-lie. They will also receive a special source revenue credit in the amount of 50%. So 50% back on incentives that are the...
Back of what?
Of the property tax that they pay.
In other words, Boeing would get 50% back of the property taxes that they pay, and they would be taxed at 4% instead of 6% for 30 years? So the 50% tax that they're getting back, what they pay, would last for 30 years, and the 4% instead of 6% would last for 30 years? I'm just trying to understand the terms, that the way the public would understand, as we pay property taxes ourselves on our homes and so forth, and that we are taxed at a certain level in our income tax, and just trying to understand that. 30 years that this ends in, is that what you're saying? 30 years? When does the 30 years begin and when does it end?
When they start putting in investment and file under that agreement.
Begin when they do the investment, and then it would end 30 years afterwards, and then it would revert to 6% and not get... How much is their yearly property tax approximately, if you know?
I don't know that off the top of my head, sir.
Pretty much.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Okay. The ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one nay.
Four B. Historic Hamlin Beach community designation request.
An ordinance designating the Hamlin Beach community and identifying 11 contributing resources therein located in the East Cooper area of unincorporated Charleston County as a historic district on the Charleston County Historic Designation List. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Four C.
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 2305, adopted July 23, 2024, to include the Hamlin Beach Community Historic District as a historic district subject to the temporary major subdivision moratorium imposed by Charleston County Council. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Nay.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Yea.
Mr. Sasse? Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with six ayes and three nays.
Item D.
An ordinance amending Chapter 7.5, Article 4 of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances, the Charleston County Green Belt Bank Ordinance Number 1424 as amended. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Item five, committee recommendations with first reading ordinances.
Five A, B.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. We will read the ordinance.
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the St. Paul's Fire District, South Carolina, to issue not exceeding $4,400,000 aggregate principal and male of general obligation bonds, providing for the publication of notice of said finding and authorization, and providing for other matters related thereto.
Item six, consent agenda.
Move for approval, six, A through F.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item seven, finance committee recommendations. Let's take these.
Seven A, B, and C.
Thank you so much. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. The ayes have it. Seven D.
Move for committee recommendations, seven D.
A discussion?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Again, we had this discussion at the committee level last week. I just would, this is our chance to have another, our vote on it, and I'd like to ask the same questions and actually add one, whether it's our attorney answers. Again, if we vote, I'll ask again, how is it a hardship if somebody buys a property and knows they can't do something, and they know they need an ordinance to do it, I mean, a variance to do it? If you buy a property knowing you can't do something unless you get the county council and the order zoning field to change it, in my mind, that's not a hardship by this asset. Am I correct? And the present owners who want the variance bought the property, and the variance was there when they bought it, is that correct? Or is the variance added after they bought the, I mean, the things that they want the variance about, was that added after they bought the property, or was that already there?
I don't know the answer to that.
You know, I'll ask the question this way, then, as a reason, if we vote for them to get the variance tonight, there will be 9,000 more square feet of commercial development in one of our most congested areas in Charleston County. If we vote no, there will not be 9,000 more feet of commercial property there. Is that correct? Isn't that what this is about, that they want the variance to build, as I understood it, 9,000 more square feet of a commercial enterprise are built?
That is correct.
And it's also true that when it came up last week, and I didn't have the presence of mind to ask this question, it was said, well, they can always tear down the other building. If we grant this variance today, they can still tear down the building in front. Is that not true?
Certainly, it's their property.
Right. Well, I mean, that was presented as a reason, as I understood it last week, that if you don't grant this variance, they could tear down the building. And I remind, I went by there this weekend, there's a beautiful building, this was, you know, where Boone Hall Market was, and it's an area, and I think it was in councilman, Sasse's district, not mine, but it affects my district, and I believe in Northern Mount Pleasant, we have a problem with overdevelopment and commercialization. And if we approve this, it could leapfrog all the way from there to McLeanville, and all the traffic that's there, we just had the bond referendum asking for 5.3 billion, and we're worried about congestion, and I, when one would not vote for something that would add more congestion, and I would ask other council members, that we have the vote coming up on the Botox Village and Bohagian Road, and I'm with them on that because the people there don't want commercialization and more traffic. And I realize that by granting this variance, we're going to be adding commercialization, and we're going to be adding more traffic to an area that can't sustain it every day, and all that traffic would impact the quality of life. And I respectfully acknowledge it's not in my district, but it's certainly in Northern Mount Pleasant, and I represent the district from Carolina Park and part of Park West all the way to McLeanville, and I ran to try to keep development... And I ran to try to keep development under control and I think this would be adverse to that. And thank you very much for answering my questions. Mr. Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kabrowski, I think we went through this last time. The zoning doesn't change. The square footage is by right. They have the right to have that square footage. Due to some of the restrictions the county has as far as the types of buffers that are required, it is a standard practice to go to the board of zoning appeals and ask for a reduction of how many feet those buffers are so that they can fit the square footage they're entitled to have on that property. That was a matter of course in my four years on the BZA. It's apples and oranges. The issue down on Betsy Carrison, that's a rezoning, that is an upzoning. They don't have the right to put what they want to build down there. It is zone residential and it's right on the urban growth boundary. So this is already commercial property, it's entitled to the square footage. They're asking for a variance because the buffers in that situation poses an unreasonable restriction of the utilization of the property. That's what they were asking the BZA for.
I understand it's our decision. We have it in our hands. Whether there's 9,000 more square feet, I think it's unreasonable to the people that live there. And if it's something they have a right to, Councilman Boykin, they wouldn't be asking a variance, they would just do it. The fact that they had to ask the variance means standing alone, they don't have a right, they have to get a variance to do something that they bought the property knowing that there was a variance they'd have to get if they wanted to do it. Those are two different things in my mind and I'm not arguing this respectfully, saying that's how I look at it and respectfully differ with you. Make a point real quick. Mr. Warman? Well. Mr. Warman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I'm just going to say, just to sort of give us all the context again, and Ms. Kabrowski, I agree with you on this issue, but to be clear, it's not totally in our hands. I mean, what we're doing here is we could, it could be in our hands to go one way, but if we, you know, vote nay on this, then, you know, it's going to go to a court and the court's going to assess whether it was a hardship or not. And I'm comfortable with that, but, you know, just to be clear, this was a determination made by the BZA. This is the settlement of what would be a court case that either has or would be filed imminently. And so, you know, just to be clear, like, what we decide here doesn't necessarily wind up being what happens.
Good point. Thank you.
You know, and just to go back to that point, these cases don't come to us. BZA is the final say for Charleston County government. The appeal goes to circuit court, which is where it's going to go if we don't settle this. And, you know, in my opinion, there's a very strong likelihood that the court would side with the applicant, but that's just my opinion.
All right, let's have a roll call vote. Mr. Pryor?
I called the attorney today and I called our planning department to get information. And Mr. Boykin is right and Mr. Warman is right. A court would normally decide this. I think there was an error, not an error, but when this went before the BZA, one of the neighbors, I believe, thought it was coming on his side of the fence and he said, no, I don't want it. So the BZA listened to him, but after the meeting, when he found out that it wasn't, he said he made an error and he, you know, he didn't mind. But I'm going to caution Mr. Kabrowski. If the court gives them permission, they don't need to do what they're doing now and saying, well, we'll have a 9,500 square foot building, they can put what they want based on the variance. If the court decides to give them that, even if the court decides no, these folks still can go back with a new site plan review and build something bigger. So sometimes we careful what you ask for because when you get it, you might not want it. So do you understand what's happening there? If it goes to the court and what you said, the court should make that decision? You know, that's out of our hands. Right now, we're in the negotiation stage saying we want to negotiate, you know, and this is what came out of the negotiation.
I understand as an attorney, one can never determine what a judge or jury would do in advance. That's out of the hands.
What I'm saying to you is it doesn't matter what the judge or jury does. If this guy decides, if the judge says no, he still can go back and do a site plan. And if we approve that site plan, he still can put bigger buildings there versus saying, I'm going to keep it at 4,500 for two buildings. Do you understand that?
Do that now, sir. In other words, that's what I asked.
Yes, sir. He can do that. So my point is, what is the argument? You know, that's my point to you. If he can do that now, or he can do it after a judge decides, is it, you just don't want county council to decide and you want a judge to decide? What is? Because just listening to yourself right now, I think you understand, you know the ramifications. He gonna get what he wants anyway, it's just rather we gonna let a judge decide and if the judge says no, then he go through a site plan review and build what he wants to build.
Haven't been there and looked at it myself. My opinion is there's the, it's the old, you know, it's the building, the market building in front there for Boone Hall. It's a beautiful building and they want to build 9,000 square feet in the back of it, which they don't have the right to do now. If they wanted to tear down the Boone Hall Market old building, they can do that now. They can do it regardless of what we do today. So, and again, I, no, I disrespectfully differ that I think I'm trying to.
So you say they can't build the buildings down the way it is unless we give them the variance?
As I understood the answer, they can't build the 9,000 square feet in the back if we don't grant them the variance. In terms of their ability to tear down what's in front, they could do that whether we vote yes or no, or whether, whatever happens.
Sam, I'm confused. Can you kind of enlighten? Because if the judge says no, and it says, okay, we just going to go back to the planning, you know, the planning department and submit some new things, they still can tear the buildings down in front and build in the back if they want to, if they submit a plan.
Right.
Is that right, Joe?
Yeah, I'm all defer to staff, but I do want to make some clarifications. The buildings proposed are by right due to their zoning. This isn't a zoning variance. This is simply a variance with regards to the size or distance of the setbacks. And I do want to reiterate that I, I am trying to have this conversation without providing legal advice here publicly, so I'm going to defer to staff to answer any more of the factual questions with regards to this piece of property.
Yes, council, if, I think the question is, can the applicant, if it goes to court and gets denied or for what other reason, he can go through the site plan review process and redesign that site however he wishes to. As long as he meets the zoning ordinance requirements, he can build whatever commercial building, whatever size building that fits on that property.
Right. Have the variance to build the 9,000 square feet as he's proposing. Mr. Moody, you can make a face, but that's the truth, isn't it?
This is chaos. Everywhere it goes, chaos.
So let's have a roll call vote. Thank you.
Is that true what he just said about they can't build without the?
I don't know. Without seeing a plan, I have no idea what size building would ultimately be able to be built on that property if the building in front was not there. Yes.
Without, so. They would have to go through a site plan review.
Right.
Let us have a roll call vote.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
No, I'm going to send it back to the judge and then Mr. Kabrowski, you can live with the consequences.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Warman?
No.
Mr. Middleton?
Nay.
With a vote of four ayes and five nays, the motion fails.
So, Chairman, I understand, Mr. Kabrowski, if something else get built that's bigger, it's on you because this is what you wanted.
I hope they do.
Yeah.
I failed to give commendations to the clerk for the minutes earlier. I so appreciate everything that our clerk and her staff does. At this time, we'll have council comments. We're going to start with Mr. Warman.
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Boykin?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pryor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. We had spoke briefly about that project on Betsy Carrison that the Kiowa Preservation decided whatever, you know, bought that property to preserve. And I think you said when you went to that meeting, because I didn't know it was two meetings, I don't know why they have one meeting for the folks on Kiowa and then another meeting for the folks on the island, which for me, it seems like there's something fishy going on. But anyway, you said that the churches were saying that that was going to affect the graveyard.
Yeah, they said that it cut their graveyard in half. And the actual line, I guess, for the, the green belt, you know, piece that was purchased actually went through their graveyard.
All right, so that's. So when I, when you said that, I said I was going to come back and ask Mr. Tooton and staff to find out if that's correct. And if it is, before this thing closes, don't close until we find out because I'm not going to support something that's going to, you know, uproot a graveyard.
Mr. Pryor, I sent some info on the green belt properties in that area and I'm not familiar with the graveyard or.
I'm telling you now so y'all can look into it.
Okay.
Because that's what the church is selling them. So if it's true, then we, you know, we need to do something to stop it. If it isn't, then it moves forward. That's all I'm asking.
What they expressed to me was that, you know, the graveyard is overrun, the underbrush is growing up, so it does not necessarily look like a traditional graveyard, but they said graves are back there. It may look like woods, but they said it cuts through and it has essentially boxed their church in. And so what the unintended consequence is that, yeah, you're preserving or conserving the areas that were purchased through the green belt funds, but the church now is landlocked. Is what they expressed to me when I was there that night.
And this is adjacent to a green belt property?
Yes, sir. So, again.
I can get the information from Mr. Tooton and look into it.
Yeah, it's St. John AME Church.
Okay. And thank you, but I still say, why did they have two meetings for Reverend Middleton? I kept, I asked him, I said, weren't you at the meeting? He said, yeah, I was at the meeting, but then when they kept calling Mr. Boykin and Mr. Honeycutt, I didn't know it was a Reverend Milton, it was a separate meeting on Kiowa.
I would have gladly gone to both of them. I only knew about one.
Separate meetings if everybody want to hear the same thing. That's, that's my, you know, closing comment.
There were two meetings, they were organized by two different people. And so I attended both meetings, the one at Kiowa Town Hall and the one at St. John's.
So wouldn't it have made sense for Kiowa to invite all these folks to the one meeting?
They were all invited, they just chose to have their own meeting at their church is what they wanted.
All right, Mr. Moody?
I still have nothing.
Thank you so much. Mr. Sasse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a, I have a request. We, I drive over the North Bridge several times every day and I've noticed since this big storm we had, that there's a sailboat that's out there in the river that keeps dragging anchor. And it looks like it's abandoned. And if it, if it keeps doing what it's going to do, it's going to end up in the marsh and cost a lot of money to get taken out of the marsh. And I'm just wondering if we can get somebody to call the Coast Guard or somebody that might drag it off before it gets into marsh and maybe, maybe has some oil in it or something. You know, it's a, it's a pretty good sized sailboat and it's right out there by, it's right out there by the pier that we have over there. You know, it could, it could hit that pier and, you know, it's, it's a, it's probably a danger to navigation, but it doesn't look like it's owned by anybody. It looks like it's floating around out there and the anchor keeps dragging. And we have a lot of problem with that. All over the Low Country, we find abandoned boats in the marsh. And if you can get them before they get up into marsh and get full of mud, it's a whole lot easier to deal with them than, than it is when they're floating than it is when they're full of mud.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tooton.
Excuse me.
I'm asking if you could look into this issue.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
Ms. Honeycutt?
Thank you. I wanted to thank council for the approval of the contract for the Maybank Woodlands Shores improvements that has been going on for six years now, and I'm very pleased that we'll be getting that underway. I did want to ask staff if we could, through the administrator, hold a public meeting over at the church in Riverland Terrace in order to advise the public when appropriate as to how that is going to work, where the lay down yard is going to be, where it's going to be staged and what the progress will look like, where we're starting, that kind of thing. Just so that folks are informed and know what's coming and of course advise everyone whether there'll be any impacts to traffic. Also, just along those lines, it's a partial TST project, is to renew my request for a discussion of the requests for proposals for a strategic TST plan. I appreciate the chairman has reached out to staff and gotten input on the information that I circulated to council on the first of the year. And I think there's some, some very helpful notes in there from, from staff and legal and hope we can have that discussion publicly soon. Thank you.
So much. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Darby?
Nothing, sir.
All right. Vice Chair Kabrowski? Well, I want to first, I'm honored that we passed the third ordinance on the Hamlin Beach community, both designated as a historic community, but also the moratorium and what that means and that shows that people can stand up for themselves and we help preserve a part of Charleston's history tonight and something that we fought hard on. And I want to, this was something very important to me and it is in my district and it's something I think that was necessary in to help preserve our, our sense of place and what Charleston means and preserve things before they disappear. And I think this shows leadership and I want to thank Councilman Pryor for being the one to originate this idea because as somebody who's lived here now for 46 years and I've always said, going from McLeanville to where I live thousands of times, I've seen so much of what is special eroding in developers and contractors think decades ahead. This is a chance for us to represent the people and think decades ahead for them to prevent what could happen and to remind people that nowhere else could this, the historic nature of what that community represents, the bonds of family and love and, and have been kept together be replaced. So we kept a little bit of irreplaceable part of Charleston together and that is worth doing and that's over with now. And I want to say I was very honored to have the first thing that I did with Chairman Middleton today as my half is the vice chairman along with Councilman Darby. And Pryor, we met with the, well, Councilman Middleton and I met with the sheriff and said that the most, it was the first thing we did to show that the most important thing that we can do as a county is preserve and protect the people that live here. And the help, I hope we give the resources necessary to what he needs and I thought we're off on a good start in that. And also the fact this is our first official meeting with the new chairman Middleton and me as the vice chairman and I'm honored to be a part of that. And I like to say that kind of history repeats itself, that we now have a bipartisan effort and the people need it to be heard and now they're heard. When I was chairman of the Charleston County Republican Party, we flipped the council from Democrat to Republican. And I remember that Councilman Moody and Councilman Sasse voted to put Councilman Royal, who was a Democrat in charge, and Councilman Sasse as a vice chairman. And so history does repeat itself as we go forward and I think it strengthens us to work in a bipartisan manner, that the problems we face are bipartisan. And I like to think that I bring to the table the voice of a unique coalition that worked very hard to do something remarkable in November when we defeated the tax referendum by two-thirds, 70% in my district, actually a little over 69, in every of 111, 118 precincts, that voice is now heard. And I hope to keep that coalition of fiscal conservatives and conservationists alive. And I hope to keep that coalition of fiscal conservatives and conservationists alive. That could make a difference. And also, as I alluded at the last meeting, I don't take this for granted. And I thought about it, and when my grandparents came to this country with like $5 in their pocket, they envisioned the world where they would always be a stranger in a strange land, but eventually their children or grandchildren could be accepted for who they are. And people could disagree. People may be unhappy with decisions I make, but it's not because of who I am, it's because of my ideas. And that's progress. And I imagine even more so for our new chairman and what it means to, for, we were talking beforehand of what it means to him having grown up in Charleston and the historic nature of it. And I'm honored to be a part of that. Thank you.[1700.74]